hereby bring the meeting of the Wayrica City Council to order. Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. This is the time for public comments. Council may ask questions but may take no action during the public comment period section of the meeting except for to direct staff to prepare a report or place an item on a future agenda item. If you are here to make comments on a specific agenda item, you may speak at that time. If not, this is the time. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. Speakers, please speak from the podium. Over here on my left, your right. State your name and mailing address so that city staff can respond to you in regards to your comments or provide you with information if appropriate. You are not required to state your name or your address if you do not desire to do so. Are there any, is there anyone that wants to speak on a separate item than what we have on the agenda? Give everybody a chance, Craig? No? Okay.[77.34][77.34][laughter] Okay. Alrighty, then we'll go forward. Item number one, discussion possible action consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion or a member of the audience wishes to comment on an item. The city manager recommends approval on the following consent agenda items, calendar items. A, approval ratification of payments issued through August 18th through September 7th, 2017. B, approval of minutes of the meeting held August 17th, 2017. C, waive full reading, full text reading of all ordinances on the agenda. Ordinances shall be introduced and adopted by title only. Anyone want to make a motion or remove an item?
Negative.
I'd accept a motion.
I'll make a motion, but we accept the consent calendar A, B, and C.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Okay, motion carries. Item number two, public hearing. Discussion possible adoption. Consideration of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Wayrica enacting chapter 9.27 entitled Non-Medical Marijuana Cultivation Regulation and the Prohibition of Commercial Cannabis Activity: Manufacturing, Testing, Dispensing, Sales, Distribution, and Delivery Within All Zoning Districts in the city of Wayrica, and finding the adoption of this ordinance to be exempt from SEQA. Staff report, well, we have the staff report now and then we'll open the public hearing after the staff report.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, you may recall that this was introduced on August 3rd as an ordinance. We've talked about this a number of times. We did have public comments over in the theater at that time as well. This is the second reading of the ordinance. The basic purpose of this ordinance is to freeze all cannabis-type businesses so that the council can decide what cannabis businesses to allow after sufficient time and engagement with the public and stakeholders. I'd be happy to answer any questions or if you think I've left anything out. I was gonna go back and try to figure out how many times marijuana been on our agenda in the last two years, but I didn't actually do that.
That would be interesting. Okay, any questions? The city manager? None? Okay, then I will open the public hearing and take public testimony at this time. Members of the public, if you have comments, come over to the podium over here and state your name if you wish to do so. And we have one. Hi.
Hi. I just wanted to bring some more information up for your, I think we're all in favor of the ban the way it is. I know I am. But compliments of the Sheriff's Department. Number one, I'd like to note that, oh, by the way, my name is Diane Collier and I'm in Wayrica. I have five hundred and nine shadow. Some of the points that the board of supervisors found was that the permitting, the permitting and the cost is far greater than any potential revenue that could come in. And it sets a precedence and they are opening themselves up to lawsuits because you're gonna discriminate who can and who cannot. Somebody else wants to come in, they wanna have one, so now you're gonna have to deal with lawsuits. Dispensaries do not create revenue. They do not create jobs. What we need is to be an industry in the city that, like NorCal products, that is not dependent on this area. They bring skilled labor jobs, dozens of them. We don't, this is not gonna create jobs. The only person who's gonna get rich is the one who owns it. So, I would like to give you some stats that Sheriff Lope gave me. So far, as of August 3rd, 2017, there were 113 search warrants. Thirty search warrants pending and seventy more planned. Illegal cannabis plant seized were 12,595 plants. Two-hundred-and-sixty-four-point-eight million retail value. Processed cannabis seized, seventeen thousand four-hundred-and-ten pounds. Firearms were twenty-seven. Arrests and pending criminal cases are thirty-eight. Actually, twenty-four arrests and seventy-eight filed. The honey oil extract, the extraction labs, which is really dangerous, that's the worst. Nine pounds of concentrated cannabis seized, nine grams of methamphetamine. And one of the labs was classified as the biggest in the state this year. That's not something to be proud of. KRC, weed, Lake Chastina, Montague, Big Springs, Irongate, Chastavista, Hammond Lake, Chasta Valley, View Valley, all were seizure locations. They seized thirty-six outdoor gardens, thirty greenhouses, fifteen growing nurseries, and three indoor. There was hazards, fire dangers, the pollution is a major issue. And I hear that they are raising opium plants between the marijuana plants. They harvest faster, therefore, by the time the SO gets there to raid, they've already harvested that. And there was, there was another issue they had here. Just to give you an idea of, I think the methamphetamines, they, the cannabis, excuse me, the honey oil, that they had seized, there was like nine pounds of it, and it was over sixteen thousand doses. This is, I mean, this is staggering what we're dealing with here. And I know at one point, one of the deputies said that they had, within just a few farms, had saved like one-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand miles of PVC pipe. Yeah, and they're, they're, this is public, private lands, mostly private is what these are, and just think what they're doing to it. So, we, we don't need this. This is not what we need. And kids get here, they get Copenhagen, you put a dispensary here, I guarantee you, they're gonna get this too. So, I just wanna support the ban.
Thank you very much. Anyone else want to speak for or against the ordinance? This is the time during the public hearing if you have anything to say. Okay, if there are no other, are you sure there's no other comments? Okay, if there's no other comments, then I'm going to close the public hearing. And at this time, we will initiate consideration of the proposed ordinance by the council. Do I have discussion or motion from council members? Norm?
I still can't support the ordinance because it does not allow some dispensaries in town. I think that's very important for several reasons. I mean, you're forcing citizens to drive forty miles north or south to dispensaries. It did pass the initiative in the city of Wayrica and at Casasque County. So, the voters did approve it. So, but the city council does have right to set the rules right now. So, that's one reason. The second reason, I think it would make a dent in the illegal market because people are still gonna buy it illegally. If they can go to the regular dispensary and buy it legally, make sure they're twenty-one and meet the requirements of not selling it to the wrong people and it's within the zoning rules, I think that's a good thing because people get robbed at these illegal drug deals. People get killed. And, you know, people will take the easy way if that's the way they do it. The other thing is, I was just reading how in cities and counties that now require the testing of the marijuana, three-quarters of the cannabis that they bring in to sell, the growers, has pesticides in it. And so, starting January 1st, it's gonna be required statewide that they test everything for pesticides. It's gonna be from seed to sale. So, I mean, it's gonna be, it's a completely big old product and they're gonna try to make sure there's good quality control. Whereas if people buy it on the street in the black market, most likely it's pesticides in it. And the other factor is that if it's made, so you can't get it in town, people are gonna encourage to grow it in their houses. And whether they follow the rules with denting and lighting and all that, it's caused house fires in other cities. So, that's a number of reasons I think that should be included into ordinance. Otherwise, I'm in favor of ninety-five percent of the ordinance. I just think we ought to add that to it to improve it.
To add that?
Amendment to allow some, to just up to two dispensaries. We could always agree to allow more, more later if needed, but I mean, I think you wouldn't wanna have a monopoly on one thing. So, I think it's a good idea to allow up to two to start with. I know Mount Shasta's supposedly expanded to five.
They have two. I think they approved a third that hasn't come in yet and they, and their ordinance states up to five.
Right, yeah. So, those are the reasons I think we should amend the ordinance to include up to two dispensaries. So, I can't support it out of sales.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Any comments?
I.
Yes?
Well, the same comments that I had last time. Basically, if we have an ideal situation where Mount Shasta and weed, now both will have dispensaries. And I think we can, we can take their, the opportunity to study them for a year's time. We're not losing anything by watching them for a year to see what exactly that, you know, that, their, what exactly that does for them. Also, I did put on an agenda item one year out that we, we evaluate the effect of, of these dispensaries on, on the local population, specifically on youth. I wanna see what happens with high schools, junior high. I wanna see what happens with their athletic teams. I wanna see what happens with, with their testing, if we can get that kind of information. I'd like to see what happens with that. We're, we have a responsibility to them and we're supposed to watch out for them. And I think, I think that's critical. Unless there's further comment, I'll make that motion.
Anyone have comments?
Then I'll make the motion that would pass ordinance number 850 as, as it stands, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Wayrica enacting chapter 9.27 entitled Non-Medical Marijuana Cultivation Regulation and the Prohibition of Commercial Cannabis Activity: Manufacturing, Testing, Dispensing, Sales, Distribution, and Delivery Within All Zoning Districts in the city of Wayrica, and finding the adoption of this ordinance to be exempt from SEQA.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, thank you. Item number three, discussion possible action. Request to appropriate funding in the amount of seventy-five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars to replace Wayrica Police Department's field communication equipment. And Chief Bowles is here. Who's going to present it? The chief?
Chief.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. Tonight before you, you have a request from the White Police Department to spend about seventy-five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars to upgrade our communications equipment. Our, our communications equipment and our patrol vehicles and on the officers that they wear daily has aged twenty-five-plus years, about twenty, twenty-seven years. It's no longer able to be repaired, so as they break, we buy new ones. We did have another one break last week that the lieutenant gave up his radio so that patrol can continue to operate. The other issue that we have is the new radio systems are capable of doing scrambled frequencies that would aid in our apprehensive, apprehension of criminals. We studied this extensively looking at whether MDTs would be appropriate for the Wayrica Police Department. MDTs are mobile data terminals that go in the police cars to exchange information between dispatch and the officer in the field and get that information to him instantly and respond back to their responding. As we looked at that, it required updating that equipment every six years and was very costly. And so, compared to taking something on that requires a lot of IT staff and patrol cars, et cetera, we thought it was more cost-effective to do a radio upgrade. Also, the MDTs would only be in the patrol units, not on the officer's belt. So, if an officer needs help or anything like that, or they're, we have a critical situation like we had this year with a shooting, the officer can get the information out to the other officers responding. And if it is scrambled, if we go to the scramble, it would be in a covert situation. So, not, not only the bad guys don't know what we're doing, but the officers will know what's going on. And I think that'll aid in our apprehension of criminals into the future. We did study this. We ended up getting a few radios out of my existing budget and a handheld, handheld and in-car radio. We studied it with our, our current repeater. Everything seemed to work perfectly and the scrambled channel appeared to work also. So, we, we did a little extensive testing to make sure that this equipment would work, and it did work well. The cost to upgrade the entire police department is seventy-five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars. This is mission-critical equipment by Motorola. It's built to withstand officers, which is quite a testimony because they're pretty rough, they're pretty rough on equipment, to say the least.
They have a tough job.
Yeah, and so, you know, it has to withstand snow, heat, rain, and falling off patrol cars, et cetera. We try not to do that, but every now and then, it does happen.
Okay. Anything else? Yes, Norm, I have a question.
How many handheld and how many patrol unit radios?
You know, I, I should've brought that with me, and I did not bring that. It was enough to do the entire, I have a quote that I didn't bring, I'm sorry.
Do you have any idea of how many we're talking about?
Yes, so, we have, I think it's fourteen. Fourteen units, and I think it's fifteen radios. Because animal controls included in there.
Right, okay. Thank you.
That would be one for each officer, that would be right. Okay, any other questions?
Reddick, do we have to pull a rabbit out of the hat or is this gonna be a?
Do we have the budget?
No, it'll be fine. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? No, then I'll accept a motion.
I'll make public.
Oh, I'm sorry, great. Please come up to the podium. I didn't see him.
Craig Marver, 509 North Oregon Street. Got a couple questions. Number one, is the funds, funding for this going to be taken out of Proposition C funds? And if it is, that's great because Proposition C was intended for public safety. I consider this to be for public safety.
And roads, right.
Right, but they were together, they were linked together during the campaign. So, I'm still concerned about the police officer, but I wanna see us to make sure we're equipping all our officers properly and using these funds for exactly that. So, anyway, that's my question, is, can anybody answer the question?
Well, that wasn't the only purpose of those, I mean, it's not like if we didn't pass that, there was no funding for the police department. So, we had current funding already set for the police department, but I think Reddick will be able to answer your question.
So, it is not anticipated to use Measure C because we have not gone through all the levels of review of allocations of the new measure C money? So, at this time, it's, will come out of our existing capital outlay reserves.
Okay, so, that brings the next question. I've asked several times if we had some kind of a?
The question will be about this agenda item, right?
Okay, it links, it links, all of these things are public safety, and I would like to see that included in some kind of a town hall meeting so we can talk about that. I'd like to see us, for example, get into things like cameras, you know, for the officers. And I think that, you know, we can start talking about these things if we know there's gonna be funding available for it. So, that's my, my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, great.
I'll make a motion, Madam Mayor, that we, we approve the funding of seventy-five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars to the Wayrica Police Department for their field communications equipment.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Motion by Rob, second by Norm. To approve the request for seventy-five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars to replace the Wayrica Police Department's field communication equipment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I think this is, this is great. I'm glad that you're upgrading. And Reddick, I'm glad that you, that you have dug the money out for it. Okay, public hearing. Item number four on the agenda. So, this is regarding the police station remodel, and this is a public hearing. So, public hearing is to give the citizens a chance to make comments regarding the proposed loan financing for Wayrica Police Station Remodel, 1400 Fairlane Road. Staff report?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, I'm gonna have Jeanette Hook give the, the staff report. We're specifically tonight talking about the police station as a whole, and the next items on the agenda that you will see have, have to do with financing.
Great, Jeanette, welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Briefly, I'm gonna kinda run through the history of this project to set the stage for the public hearing that you're, you're conducting this evening. You, council will recall that, that we have investigated approximately twenty-five sites. We settled on two as being the primary possibilities. We evaluated both of those sites, and the council at the time chose to remodel the building on Fairlane Road. And as you will recall, the bids for that remodel came in too high. We had come back and we are regrouping those plans and, and evaluating, you know, what else we might be able to trim out of the building. And we are also augmenting the budget through a USDA loan, which you authorized us to proceed with that last meeting. The public hearing is, is intended to allow, to ensure USDA, when they give us a loan, they wanna make sure that, that the community has had the opportunity to provide your input to the council, that they have had that chance to hear, to hear from, from the community. Over the past approximately seventeen years, I counted up at least twenty times that this has been in front of the, either in front of the council or the planning commission or some other form of a public, public meeting. So, in my opinion, I believe we've heard from the public, but the USDA wanted to ensure that they had every opportunity to, to make their, their thoughts known. Once, once you've conducted the public hearing, I can address the other two items that I'm here for you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now's the time for the public to make comments on this item. And this item, of course, being the Police Station Remodel Public Hearing regarding the financing of such. So, if anyone has any comments, please step up to the podium. You guys are being much too easy on us tonight. Really? No comments? Okay, so, I'm gonna ask three times. Is that Robert's rules? We're not following, okay. Are there any comments?
Do you want working set drawings?
If you would like to comment, could you please step up to the podium? Thank you. And actually, we do have it, but I don't think we have it here, right? There, that's not the working set, but, yes, sir.
Steve Young.
Yes, Steve.
Do we have a working set of drawings? Because, I mean, that location has gotta be the worst for assault.
The permits have already been pulled and approved by the city. The plans have already been submitted through the architect. There is a few revisions that are going on as we speak, but those will be revisions to the existing permit that was pulled.
Okay, and it meets all the requirements of attack from the street?
Attack. It will when it's finished.
What's the bullet rating on your building?
The bullet rating is zero at this time.
You don't, so you don't have bullet-resistant glass or walls?
It will.
Not right at this time, no.
No.
Yeah, but we're not using.
We've owned the building for a while. So, without going into the security of it, what is proposed is that the whole dispatch area from the public area has bulletproof, not only in the walls but the glass. The exterior of the parking lot is cement around the perimeter.
Okay, good.
So, that's what was proposed. There are some, if we don't have enough money, there are some things in there to take that away. So, that'll come before the council later.
Yeah, I just, to me, that's just the easiest target to hit, to me. I'm not saying it would. We've got some flying drugs in this town that could take out that building.
We're gonna be taken out by cold weather and snow and rain at our existing building if we don't do something soon.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Thank you, Steve. Any other comments? Any other comments from the public? Okay, so, I will close the public hearing at this time and then bring this back to staff. So, I'll close the public hearing and initiate council consideration of the proposed resolutions. So, do I read that or is that the?
That'd be great.
Okay, the whole thing?
Does she read them or you gonna read them?
She's gonna read it. She has better voice.
And I, and I forgot my glasses. Okay, discussion possible action. Adopt a resolution declaring the city of Wayrica's intent to reimburse certain general fund expenditures from the proceeds of USDA tax-exempt certificates of participation and directing certain actions with respect thereto as required by United States Department of Treasury, Treasury Regulation Section 1.150-2 for the Wayrica Police Department Building Project.
I'm gonna step in for Reddick here and ask her to, to add in if I missed anything. Hopefully, I can explain it appropriately. The purpose of this resolution is to meet the IRS regulations that allow us to reimburse ourselves from the proceeds of the loan once we take it out. You will recall that the loan itself will not be issued until we're done with construction, so it will be in arrears, and we needed to get a date certain of when we, you know, start accumulating the expenditures so we can say we, we, all of these expenditures from this date are associated with the construction and therefore eligible for reimbursement. That's what this resolution does. So, Reddick, did I get the high points?
You did. Okay, any questions from council?
No.
You have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we declare the city of Wayrica's intent to reimburse general fund expenditures from USDA certificates of participation as required by IRS Department of Treasury Regulations for the Wayrica Police Department Building Project.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the second item is discussion possible action. Adopt a resolution approving a consultant agreement with the Weiss Law Firm Bond Counsel Services for the Wayrica Police Station Remodel USDA Loan Financing.
Okay, this item is also related to the police department. When we issue a bond with USDA, we, we need specialized legal counsel, which is referred to as bond counsel. And in this case, Weiss Law Firm is a firm that has worked with USDA in the past and are well experienced with issuing the certificate of participation, which is the vehicle that USDA uses. This, again, this, these costs and, and the, the agreement will not come into play until we're actually processing the loan sometime next year, but we wanna get that in place. We wanna get that lined up and ready to go so that that is, that we can check that off the list and be moving on, moving on to the next thing. So, the total cost is thirty-two-two-fifty with their potential expenses. This is in line with, with previous certificates of participation that the city has issued. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a question. And it's not gonna hold up what I want. I'm just curious, is the, can the thirty-two-two-fifty be embedded in the, in the loan?
Yes, it is an eligible loan cost, yes.
Thank you.
It seems reasonable. It's about one-point-one percent of the loan, so it seems reasonable to be.
One percent?
Little over one percent. One point, just under one-point-one.
Okay, that's them. Okay, any other questions? I'd accept a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving a consultant agreement with the Weiss Law Firm for Bond Counsel Services for the Wayrica Police Station Remodel USDA Loan Financing.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so, go forth and build a police department, please. Yes.
Before the end of next year.
Yes. This is, Rob's carrying a torch on this one.
I am.
Well, we all are. He's, he's leading the charge. Okay, all right, so that's, that's great. We can go forward. Okay, item number five, discussion possible action. Authorize execution of intergovernmental service agreement between the city and the Karuk tribe and Karuk tribal housing authority, SEQA exempt. Mr. Baker?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, this agreement is to provide water, wastewater, and storm-
and stormwater utility services for twelve houses that the Kruuk Tribe Housing Authority is constructing. We've had previous agreements back in ninety-one and ninety-nine, uh, for earlier phases of the project, however, these units were not included in that. One of the principal, um, things that was not in the previous agreements was a provision for the payment of development impact fees. That's cause there weren't any back in ninety-nine. And, uh, so these are subject to those in exactly the same manner as, uh, anybody building the city. So, they're, um, they're half off still, but, uh, that would be the same for everyone. There are some provisions, one of the things with dealing with the tribe as a sovereign nation is that we need to put in a number of different provisions so that they have to comply with, to the extent that we can, our rules and regulations. They have agreed to do that for our water and sewer, uh, connections, uh, water and sewer services. Uh, they've also given us a conditional waiver of sovereign immunity, uh, which they have to do as a tribe in order for us to enforce the agreement. Uh, this is a lot of back and forth between us and the tribe, as you've seen with other, uh, not so much this council. One member of this council has seen a lot of back and forth before with the tribe.
That was, that was my turn.
And, um, because of their, their, uh, sovereign, uh, status, and this is a compromise, there were things we would've liked to have had in, and there were things that they would've liked to keep out, um, but we did go through the, uh, process. So, uh, the amount of the development impact fees is just under seventy-eight thousand dollars that will be divided among the, uh, different, um, water, sewer, public facilities, and a couple of other things I can't remember off the top of my head, but...
Okay, any questions?
Do they pay monthly fees in addition to these development fees?
Yes, they do. Yeah, they'll, they'll pay exactly the same fees as anyone else.
Water, sewer, everything.
And for me, um, how are they going, are they going to be required to participate at the same level with the MS for wastewater?
We actually put in the, uh, agreement, because it's not clear whether or not they have to comply with everything with that, and we put into the agreement that we'll, we'll work on, on getting to that development. The, um, the houses are already constructed, actually, so at this point. Um, and they actually do use, um, I wanna say non-perv, or perv- pervious surfaces, I'm not sure. They do use pervious surfaces for driveways in some of the areas as well, so they don't take up quite the footprint that some houses do with the driveways and that sort of thing.
Okay, so can you confirm that we are not going, we as a city are not gonna be held responsible for something we have no control over on their property?
Pretty sure I know what our defense is.
Okay.
If there is a problem, so...
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I'd accept a motion.
I'll make a motion that we, um, authorize execution of the intergovernmental service agreement between the city and the Kruuk Tribe and the Kruuk Tribe Housing Authority, Secua Exempt.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item number six is our mayor pro tem.
It's all pretty self-explanatory. I just wanted to bring everybody up to date on what I've been doing, and thank you, Liz. She provided us tonight with these, um, other copies of the property, which is pretty handy.
But, um, do you have any questions?
And at the end, I did say questions, concerns, comments, ideas. Are you okay with me continuing to, um, investigate?
Do you wanna talk about your project a little bit?
Oh, no, I'm good.
I'll give an overview.
No, that's okay.
Go ahead.
Um, currently, what, uh, Steve, I'm sorry, City Manager Steve and our Mayor June, uh, we went out and did a walk-through on Channel Four, and, um, actually, it has a lot of potential, and the reason we even considered that, which was an idea given to me anonymously, but we, it wasn't my idea, I can't take credit for it.
Of course.
But, but it, um, has great potential, because what I would like to accomplish is to have it available and accessible to the general public. That's number one.
Right by the road.
Mm-hmm, so it's right by the road, rather than have staff have to actually drive through, drive anyone through public yard to, uh, get to the facility. Also, with the current list of improvements that need to be done, which are quite extensive, ninety thousand and up, uh, for electrical and all kinds of issues that are going on, which everybody, if you've gone online to see the agenda, the list is there. Um, but it also has potential for being way more inviting, and it's gonna last us a long time, anywhere from twenty-four to thirty dog kennel, and I, uh, hope to have a little more information for you as time goes by, but if somebody has a question or idea, please let me know.
Well, the old one I added up is a hundred and eighty-three thousand for all these upgrades.
And I don't wanna put good money after bad, so we could invest that into, uh...
That'd be sixty-eight.
Another facility, and by using Channel Four and just remodeling it a little bit, I think we can save a lot of money that way. However, the, um, dog kennel itself does need to be built from the ground up, and that's where the big expense is gonna be, but not, not really big. So, don't get afraid. Don't be afraid.
And, and just for a little background information from people that are here that may not have been part of the discussion, two years ago, three years ago, when, when we first, uh, were elected, um, we, we currently have an animal control facility. Um, it's, uh, it's pretty bare bones. I think that the Police Department does a great job with, with what they've got. It's located at the very back part of Public Works, so in order to get to the animal control, you have to go through all the heavy-duty equipment, you have to go through the water department, and you gotta go through the mechanics, and it's just, it's not a, an appropriate location, and I don't think it's safe for the public to be wandering around in there looking for the, the dog kennels, if you will. We've, we've been, and Debbie, excuse me, Councilmember Deborah, who has been working really hard on us for a long time, and looking at all the different locations in town, and you've looked at many.
And out of town.
And out of town, because we're looking at all the options, and she even went to the county to talk to the county to say, is there something we can do jointly? And the county didn't even take a breath and said no.
Actually, it was someone before me.
Oh, okay, that was before you.
Wasn't me, yes.
Anyway, they were not interested in doing something jointly, which doesn't make a lot of sense.
At that time, so, we might bring it back for review.
Right, maybe.
That would be a good idea.
Yeah.
Because just the same way that it was before you, it was probably before them.
Well, I...
Actually, would, they built the animal control facility for the county when I was on the board, and it's, it was new, you know, ten, fifteen years ago, maybe.
No, but they might wanna have partnership now.
They may.
Well, to me, it would make sense, because we're here together, but I think economically it would be the better, um, option, but, uh, regardless, we have to have a new faci- another facility, because we're kind of in dire straits with it, so...
Right.
Chief, do you have anything to add? I'm sorry, I'm...
I do, the only thing that I wanted to add to that is that the old facility that I talked about was way at the back. This, this one, that's the building that's already built, as you said, it's Channel Four, is right by the road, and there's, uh, the ability to put a gate in, so you wouldn't have to go on weekends when it's locked, if you had to go in to get your animal and you couldn't get it, that would be locked, and there's a gate that would open just to that facility, which I think is a perfect location, my, my humble opinion.
Keeps the city yard secure.
Yeah, keeps the city yard secure, and it, it has its own facility, but it's not too far from the rest of everything else.
Yeah, no, the current facility does meet the current standards, um, in animal care, but it is very insufficient, uh, in many things, too, and it needs a lot of work to be upgraded. Um, so I think we're on the right line to be looking ahead at that facility and try to improve the, the housing of our animals.
And, and it's a building that we, that the, the city already owns the property, and already owns the building, and those of you that see it, if you drive by the north end of town, you see that big dog statue out there? I don't know who made the dog statue.
Stare, stare at it.
But, but there's like a, a perfect place for a little dog park out there, it's really nice. I think it's where they, um, they train.
Canine training.
They canine, they do canine training out there, so I think it's a perfect, perfect location. I don't know how, Steve?
Could you guys please draft an ordinance to license cats, so you can get in some more revenues? The dogs aren't the problem, it's the cats in this town, and I don't see too many cat pieces who attack me. But anyway, uh, cause money's a big issue. Please, start making cat owners pony out.
We have a terrible problem in my neighborhood with two or three people. One guy lets loose cats, just breed, breed, breed. I don't know where these kittens disappeared to eventually, but I do know they all come across the street to use our houses for their litter box.
Oh.
And it's the most rank, I'm, it's just horrible. They eat chili or something.
You know what? I'm just gonna give that to our mayor pro tem, but right now, we're talking about animal control, but thank you for your input on that. And we'll look, we'll look into the other animal control issues. Okay, thank you for your input. Um, if, any other comments? I, I would like to say thank you to Debbie. You've done a wonderful job. You've gotten a lot of good information.
Did you like our report?
Come on, you know me.
That's okay.
But no, you've done a good job. You've done all the work, all the background, and I appreciate it.
But I just wanted to mention, from a staff perspective, there, there are a couple of projects that we need to, um, get some needs analysis or some engineering, or some design work. Uh, this is one of them, the other is the bathroom, uh, project, so we're going to be talking with a local architect to involve them.
Bathroom here?
Bathroom here is, yeah, we need a ADA bathroom.
Yes, yeah, we do need a bathroom. We do need, some people think the bathroom's back here. There is no bathroom back here.
I've been using it all these years.
There's a door. TMI, Rob, TMI. There is a water fountain.
I'm getting a vision there.
There's a water fountain and a door back there, there is no rest, so, um, anyway.
I'm down, good. If somebody has a question.
Anybody else? Any questions?
Yes.
Okay, Lorenzo, come on down.
Yeah, I live on the, uh, street that has potholes on it, the city can't afford to pay them. Um, there's a number of illegal, uh, backyard breeders in this town, and these are criminal organizations. They're unlicensed, they don't pay, uh, sales tax, they're declared as income tax.
What, what animal are you talking about?
Dogs, dog breeders.
Okay.
Uh, they're criminal enterprises, and they add to the dog population, and they add to the unwanted dog population. So, any animal control plan should involve cracking down on these unlicensed criminal activities that add to the dogs. Reduce those, you reduce the number of unwanted dogs, reduces the burden on the animal control.
Hmm, you're the first person that's come and told us that.
I believe I've told you that before.
Uh, maybe you have.
Yes.
My memory isn't what it once was. I learned that we come here.
And I can read this on Craigslist, and you'll see dozens of backyard breeders selling dogs, unlicensed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oregon and Jackson Street, this one good Hipple's Yard Hall.
Okay, so, uh, thank you for the input on that, and, um, we'll continue.
Chief is taking notes, and I'm sure he'll have a discussion with our animal control officer.
Yes, just breeding dogs and selling them is not illegal. They don't have to have license till six months, so, unless, um, we need a little more information for animal control.
Sales license.
Lot of people have dogs on accident on purpose. Um, that may be true, we'll have to check into that, I'm not sure about the business license to sell dogs.
My dog uses the safe sex, and he don't...
Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, let's not bring him up for the money for that.
We're not gonna charge for that. Okay, okay, so I think that that, that is the end, and we're to our, um, reports, so...
Yes, Mayor, Members of Council, um, tonight, I have, uh, there's two things I wanted to talk about. One is the police chief's going to give a, a progress report on the Police Department, and the other thing that I would like to, to talk about, but there was someone that actually was involved, is the fire that is now contained out further on the hill, but...
I was gonna ask, nobody asked about your news report.
I will, I will talk about that, cause that might come up during somebody else's report.
It might, yes.
Since he worked on it.
All right, I'll bring it up later.
Okay.
Chief?
Chief. Tonight, um, I'll be going over the quarter, be a report for the, uh, Police Department Animal Control. I don't know if I brought enough copies for every animal to be helping.
Thank you. This looks good.
Not, not too bad. We're improving it as we go, is that working?
Thanks, be sure, be sure to keep one.
I'd like to, that you returned a hundred and fourteen dogs to owners, that's great news.
And then, um, I might as well line up, hand these out, I have some for the public council. Um, covering, these are some, uh, new trifles, what kind of snakes?
Shame in Christmas.
We found snakes in here?
As staff, we're always interested in what gets picked out of our reports, so glad to know.
Mount lion and bear, I saw the bear.
Did you?
It was right by my house. Two snakes and two raccoons.
So, I'll be going over, um, things that have been occurring, uh, at the Police Department Animal Control from March till August, uh, this year. So, I'll go over briefly, if there's anything that you'd like me to pull, I guess you'd say, or talk a little further into, I'll be glad to do that, but there's a lot of information here, and I really don't know how much time I have, and normally, the city manager puts me on a tight leash on this, but I'm not really sure.
Think, think remedy with questions.
Oh, remedy with questions.
So, you got, your council call.
So, uh, animal control, we've, uh, we've returned about a hundred and fourteen dogs, um, and fourteen dogs were adopted, eighteen dogs were transferred, we filed four cases with the district attorney for hot dogs left in cars. That's not the little hot dogs?
Yeah.
Those are dogs that, uh, were in cars, that it gets a little hot, our animal control officer has a temperature gun, so he has a procedure goes through when you get those calls, they check the inside temperature with it, and then they use, uh, equipment to enter the vehicle without breaking windows.
So, what's the temperature? It has to be over before they break?
I don't really know, uh, I gave it to the city manager a demonstration the other day, I don't remember what the temperature is.
I don't remember the temperature either.
I'm just curious, but I know it gets hot quickly.
I think, I think he also assessed the stress of the dog.
Right.
So, the dog's already in stress, and it may not be there.
Yes.
And are they fined? What is done?
That's up to the court system.
Oh, do you write them up, or?
Yes.
Okay.
We send it to the court for either warrants, or for them to appear in court, and the district attorney will decide what to do with those people.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Uh, we did have some, uh, mountain lion, couple sightings, bear, uh, they had a deer stuck in a hammock, uh, it was quite a drop to get it.
Stuck in a hammock?
Yep, they had to cut it out of the hammock, it's horns, it's stuck in a hammock.
Oh, my.
So, it was a little challenged.
Wow.
Couple snakes, raccoons trapped, some sheep in the road.
What kind of snakes?
I don't really know the types, I didn't ask.
Are they poisonous? Are they poisonous, or just somebody's escaped snakes?
Cats.
Cats, maybe?
I don't really know, it tells me it's whether, I don't think they're rattlesnakes, though. Normally, um, I usually get called out when we have rattlesnakes. Um, but I can check into that for you.
Okay, it's all right.
Question, the sheep in the road, how many times did they get to be in the road before we get to have lamb chops?
Probably once.
Yeah.
Depends on if you hit them.
So at the police department, it was a busy summer. We're still in the summer. We had a...
What was the parvo outbreak?
Parvo outbreak at the county, their facility.
Oh.
Their county facility. So we housed their dogs for however long we needed. I know it was at least a week and a half.
They didn't bring their parvo with them, did they?
No, we did not contract any parvo.
Okay, good.
But it's something that we do within not only law enforcement but animal control. They need help, we help them. They... we need help, they help us. So it's a... we do that quite frequently within our organizations. And we had some major crimes. Stabbing, which was a murder, 76 station. Search warrants. We had about seven drug houses in Waireka. This year, about 23 arrests. Heroin and methamphetamine. The drug of choice, weapons found in the residences. We did find a human skull under a house. We just retrieved that back. I'm waiting for the written report. It appears the written report will say it's of historical value. It doesn't appear to be linked to any murder at this time, but we don't have the written report. So I'll be getting a little more information on that. Our officers had to go over to Bend or go up to Bend, Oregon to testify on a murder case that happened there. And we had a shooting and a kidnapping that happened here. So we had a number of officers out of town for some time. Homelessness, of course. Homelessness has been a big topic over the summer. We've implemented a few procedures. I do have that procedure there if you'd like to get a copy. Happy police department. So as this issue is raised, we've adopted... So what our new procedures encompass is encampments, parks, and vouchers. So I'll go briefly over them. Encampments on public property, it's pretty easy for us, because we are a public entity. So we have a procedure we follow. If we find an encampment on public property or a public place, there are procedures that's followed. City crew personnel end up cleaning it up. And it's not too hard. We do have to post it for... We have to post the campsite for eviction. I guess you'd say, we give them so many days to clean up. Encampments on private property continue to be a challenge. There is a procedure right here. We did two last week. We have three scheduled next week. This is quite an ordeal. We did a very large one below Greenhorn Dam. Another one has popped up two days later. So it appears as we... As the city does improvements on greenway projects and in creeks, we still have them there, but they are moving into public areas too, such as parks and public areas. So that's something to think about. But we have a procedure on private property, which will eventually... We work with the property owners, let them know. We give them that handout that I just gave you that also gives them some resources for cleanup. If you notice on one of the pages, it shows one, two, three, four, five companies that they can call that have agreed to assist businesses, homeowners, in cleaning up homeless camps on their property. We will assist them with making arrests for trespassing and keeping people off their property if they so desire. If they desire not to do that, there's a procedure where they end up getting sent to city hall for looking into public nuisance on the property. And that's a whole another civil realm that can be followed. I think, probably, I would say, we'll find out, but hopefully 80% will comply. I think most people want to comply. So I'm hoping just the mere fact that we're tackling this issue head-on and addressing it will work. Some of the other things we're doing in the parks, we're spending more time in the parks, checking them out. I think that's gonna be something that we'll have to do continuously. Vouchers, we do issue stage vouchers, not only to people after they've been incarcerated. Whether... everybody in the county gets incarcerated here. So they come from Happy Camp to Lake, Weed, Mount Shasta, anywhere, the vast area of the county. CHP brings them in, every other entity brings them here. A lot of times, they don't have the funding to get home. So we do issue vouchers for them to get home where that is, with our county bus line. And that's the only vouchers we're issuing at this time. So I'm hoping some of these things address the homeless issues that have come up with some ideas in our handouts, which covers panhandling, lawyering, prowling, and trespass. It's sort of a little hands-on thing, what the elements of the crime are for the public and business owners to take a look at and see what we have to do to clean up Waireka. And I think, you know, I need everybody's help to do that. It's just not the police department. We need business owners, which they do. They press charges for trespass, and sometimes three different ones in one night on the same person. But if we continue to do that, we'll set a tone that we're not gonna allow that. So I'm hoping this will work. Some people just don't care, and we won't be able to cite or arrest our way out of it. But I think this is a good start. Homeless...
This looks good. This is a good tool, thank you, to give to the public.
Yeah, and we'll be putting it on our Facebook and getting it out there a little more. I wanted to sort of debut it here tonight for you. So homelessness is a huge issue. There was an ad hoc committee formed with council members that I think will be beneficial as time goes on. Enforcement on shopping carts, shopping carts, you know, is a problem. We've had... All the business has been contacted, only one... I don't wanna single anybody out, but one did not respond. And so the new police department is being housed. We have about 27 shopping carts in the new police department now.
Should we sell them back to the owners?
No, but there is a possibility to create a municipal code that can hold them hostage until they pay to get them back.
You meant to hold on to the carts.
We wouldn't want to do that as a service.
We keep them for storage purposes.
That's a better way to put it.
There you go. It's a good thing we have our attorney to advise us, yes.
But there has been, I don't know exactly how many shopping cart citations, but quite a few. And people aren't very happy about it.
Dwayne knows, he's counted them all.
Yes, I have. Homeless issues have exploded. Events outreach, we did a number of things this summer. Ice cream with a cop, coffee with a cop. Ice cream chill with a cop, two of those events. Active shooter training with the crew tribal courts. Low hits and scholarship award was awarded. Personnel, we did hire a fifth full-time dispatcher, very exciting. It's helping with our issues at the police department. Testing part-time dispatcher. We'll be testing, I believe we're gonna be testing again. Testing animal control, we do have somebody in background for that, so...
Oh, nice.
Great, that'll be good. We have one peace officer that's been injured and going through some recovery. Will need another surgery.
Question there. On the other side, it says two injured officers.
Yes, I should get the other one back. I have one that was injured in a fight in a trailer at JCPenney parking lot. Just located his thumb completely in reverse. And so I'm hoping to get his... As long as he doesn't need surgery next week. So I do, I have been out two officers. He's been on light duty this, so I've been able to assist him. And I do, I have another officer that's on light duty that I've temporarily assigned to the city manager at city hall to do code enforcement.
Yes, and we do appreciate you letting him. He's coming in handy. We may not give him back.
That's what I'm afraid of. That's what I'm afraid of, is I need him back.
He's doing a good job.
Officer of the Year Travis Cook, Support Person of the Year Dusty Wilson, animal control officer. We did have a funeral for retired Chief of Police Bill Duncan, just recently.
Yeah, that's sad.
Very sad. Goals, some of the goals we accomplished was we did hire the fifth dispatcher. It's very well. Prop 30 money was given to Team Shasta to help with the homeless and give us some ideas, which was very good. We did implement the Narcan program, which is if somebody's having an opiate attack under the influence of heroin, we can administer that in the field now and bring them back to life. New building application continues process for the building timeline is created. We did repair our drains, dog kennel drains, and no longer seem to back up. So that's a way we had that backup about every week, week and a half. And city crew was quite busy trying to keep things flowing.
Chief, that Narcan program for officers, was that a long training combined?
No, the training is less than an hour.
How much does a Narcan cost?
Right now, this was provided by the county, and I don't recall the amount. It's kind of expensive.
Can we see if the fire department might be able to get that or determine what kind of liability that we might have if we do that?
So this is the training and having the product available?
Right, the Narcan available. I mean, from my understanding is if you come across someone that's in a heroin overdose mode, this just brings them right out, and it could potentially save their life. So I just don't know what the liability is if, you know, well, he was drunk and you just wind up giving him Narcan.
There's no... you can give it to me right now. It just goes up your nose, it's a spray.
Eels better.
And there's supposed to be no side effects if you give it to somebody that has them. No symptoms.
So I'd love to, if we could just... And I apologize, I probably should have asked my chief this first. Chief, if you're out there looking at this on TV, I'm so sorry. I got a little carried away.
I will be happy to discuss that with the fire chief.
With Chief Lemos, thank you.
And other relevant people.
Thank you very much.
Other relevant people.
I'm sorry.
So those are goals. Some things on Prop 64, and I sort of guessed ahead, I guess you would say, on one of the things. But we did some dispensary tours with elected officials. That was quite eye-opening for me. We did pass a zero dispensary cultivation testing manufacturing for Waireka tonight. And we have a contract with SCI for education, implementation, and development in stages. If the council so desires, and that will be on September 27. That will start a public education, city council of education. So for us at the police department, we're using a lot of overtime to keep the streets safe out there. We've continuously been, for the last three to four years, one to three officers down at all times. And a lot of the reasons why we're using overtime is due to the required training, routine vacations, and the two officers that have been injured. I should hopefully get one back. But just being down one guy is a big deal for us to meet our obligations. So our 12-hour shifts are more routine. Officers getting a little tired, they're not signing up for overtime. I have overtime, they've been on the board for two, three weeks. So if people don't sign up for overtime, they don't get their vacations. So we cancel their vacations. We do have one that's gonna be possibly activated this weekend. He's in the National Guard to go help Oregon with their fires. So that will cause an additional issue. And that's our quarterly report. Any other questions?
Great report. Very thorough, thank you. I mean, we know that you guys are busy, but this really gives us an idea of exactly what you're doing. And I really also appreciate the report on the homelessness. Because there's some things that Dwayne and I are working on that fits in with very nicely. So thank you, question?
Well, this just points out the need that we have that Measure C meeting to talk about funding for public safety and for the roads, because I feel the police department needs another officer.
You can do that during your report.
Yeah.
Okay. So any questions on your report? Okay, then we will start over here with Dwayne and give council reports. Is it working? Because I couldn't get my...
Yeah, I got one.
Oh, you downloaded it.
He's got things written in red.
In red?
I apologize for giving that out. That's the only color it comes in. It's gray.
Oh, my.
Debbie's like, whoa.
Where is Debbie? There she is.
I just wanted to point out it's nice that we got a little rain today. It was very refreshing. Makes it nice to clear the air a little bit at least. It'll hopefully help out on my buck hunting tomorrow too when I'm gone, so... Anyways, also Saturday, I want to remind people too, we have the... There's Little League fundraiser going on. It's a comedy night at the community center there.
Oh, no.
It was my stomach.
We have, this Tuesday, with Siski, we have our Siski homeless correlation meeting coming this Tuesday. So we're attacking this to our best that we can. It's been, like Chief was saying, it's been quite a challenge to address this issue. And we're coming at it from all different angles to make sure that it's handled properly and efficiently. And just to make people feel safe again in this town. I've been on a couple meetings, we've been on a couple meetings. We have a couple more to attend here in the next week or so also on this whole thing. I want to also bring up the subject, I'm sure a lot of people knew about this, the vandalism that went, that took place at the Greenhorn Park and how fast the city...
This is my report.
Oh, whoops, sorry.
I didn't see you there.
Yes, but you can get into more of it. But anyways, I just was really proud that our city jumped on that and really got on it, cleaned it all up, and made it look... And all the volunteers that jumped on that. And I'll let Joan get into more of that. Due to, you know, due to that, I think it's something we ought to bring up, the subject again, about the park host. And I would really like to have this at our next meeting. Some discussion on the park host again. Because I think this is a... Because of situations like this, this is a valuable asset for us to have a park host there and hopefully prevent some of this stuff going down. And it'll just make the public feel more safe too. Because I'll tell you what, I've had a lot, and I know other people, council members, have had a lot of comments from the public about how they don't want to be in the park anymore and take their kids to the park. So I think this would help, I mean, that situation, bringing some sense of security to our park system, our valuable park system that we have put a lot of time and a lot of energy. And I know a lot of people that are very proud of our park, Greenhorn Park, and we'd like it to be shared by all, so... I'm doing that, that's what I'm gonna leave it at.
Okay.
Debbie? You want to do yours now?
No, they have a good weekend.
Rob, I know you have a report.
Okay, so...
You had an exciting afternoon.
The reason why I'm dressed like this is because we did have a wildland fire this... It's showing us a wildland lightning fire, so perhaps that's what was caused. That was the cause. It was around West Greenhorn Road, almost at the end of Marlowe Lane, if anyone's familiar with that.
Is that all the way up Greenhorn?
Almost. Seems like it. So although I was in, I was getting out of my suit and my tie and trying to put on this stuff at the time, so I wasn't paying a whole lot of attention to where we were going. So that was, that was interesting. It's, I'll make a pitch for the fire department. We would like volunteers. If you would like to dress like this in wildland gear or dress in something more appropriate with a tank on your back and go into something that's hot, you should get in touch with Chief Jerry Lemos or call the city directly. We'd love to have your application. It's something that's needed, and it's rewarding. And you will be appreciated a lot by not only us, but also by the citizens. So that's a good thing. I also attended a meeting with the KRC and met with the executive director. And that was, that's interesting. It's, as everyone knows, I mean, there's this group that's formed that is responsible for if the dams are coming out, they're the ones that are the overseers. So all we're doing as a city is simply making sure that we're on their radar screen if that happens to be the case, so that any ramifications to the city are addressed. And that's about where I can leave that. And Madam Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you. Specifically water and nothing else. I'm not gonna get into a lawsuit. Okay, Norm?
Just dams.
No dams.
I mentioned that we do need to hold a hearing on the Measure C proceeds, hopefully within the next month or two, because it's passed last November.
Well, actually, we're still finding out how much we're getting in, but we can talk about it.
Okay, well, I went to a meeting of the Waireka Area Fire Safety Council at the Klamath Forest Headquarters. And several things are coming along. This project that's along Craggy Creek or something that's gonna treat 260 acres. Some are in the city limits, some are outside the city limits. There's supposed to be a public environmental report. And they're supposed to hold a public hearing on this sometime coming up. So keep on the lookout for that. And then they're talking about the Waireka Fire Resiliency Hazard Mitigation Plan that the city needs to coordinate with the county, because that plan has expired for the county. And so it's urged that the city and the county get together and work on this. And, uh, Chief Lemos was not at the meeting, so hopefully he'll be at the next meeting on September twenty-eighth so he can work with this on setting up some goals of, uh, on both the hazard mitigation plan and also this public project of where they're gonna treat certain lands that fall within the city limits. So those are important things.
If I can comment, we're aware of the need to upgrade the, update the hazard mitigation plan and, uh, the other stuff, and I have an intern working right now on putting together maps for a meeting that may not occur until after fire season's over.
Well, I know they're very busy with the fire season.
Oh, we did, we, we didn't think we could get everyone to the meeting, but we'll try to set it up.
Okay, that's my report.
Okay, thank you. Um, so it has been a, a really busy, well, it was three weeks. Usually it's two weeks in between each one, but this particular, uh, month, it was three weeks. And as Dwayne said, we did attend, um, Team Shasta is an organization of, kind of a, not exactly an organization, is it? It's more of an informal group of citizens in the Mount Shasta area that have gotten together to address many issues, one of them being homelessness. And they've done a lot of really good work on that. And as the chief said, we, uh, the chiefs, uh, our chief included, kicked in many, grant many that came down from the state to hire, um, Dr. Marbit. So that's an ongoing, um, uh, the report came to us and now we're in the implementation stage. So we're in the process of getting all the right people, uh, at the table, which includes the county. And I invited our supervisor, so she was there, Dwayne and I were there, Steve was there, as well as, thank you Chief for sending Lieutenant Gamash. So we had, uh, he is our homelessness liaison from our police department, as well as we had people there i- in the behavioral health building, that's where the meeting was, but from the behavioral health staff, including their director. Uh, and she has pledged some funding toward this. Um, also Ed Petches from Mount Shasta, Weede, Mount Shasta area, is working on getting us some grant funding to help with the implementation. Um, each city is working on their own and the mayor of Mount Shasta, Kathy Morder and myself have invited all of the Lola cities, uh, to also become involved in this because it's not, granted, the cities along the I-five corridor are probably the hardest hit by homelessness, but, uh, all, every single city in our county is being impacted by homelessness, as well as the forest service because as we push them out of our cities, they're going into the forests and fires happen. So this is a really, really big complicated issue and I applaud Dwayne for taking the bull by the horns and, and really delving into this. And, uh, it's very time-consuming, but it's worthwhile because, um, we've, we, we set a priority with families with children and, uh, either a mother, a single mother with children or a single father with children, to help these people first, you know, to get them out of harm's way. And so we're looking for funding to do that. And we've, we've been able to uncover some ways and some funding and some things that we didn't know about before, so. Um, it's incremental, it's going to take time, but I feel like we're making positive steps, don't you?
Most definitely.
Yeah, and as Dwayne said, the next meeting is on the twelfth.
Well, just, just, you know, getting the county together at this point, which has never been done before, you know, bringing the county together, all the cities together and just getting on the same sheet of music has made a, a huge difference right there itself. We can, we can compare ideas, we can look at what works in some places and doesn't work there, you know? So just working together has just made a huge difference and it's gonna make a huge difference for the future, bringing this together and doing the right thing, it's just, there's no solution to the problem, but we can make it better for everybody around here and it's by working with the county and everybody, it's making a difference.
And this meeting that we had, this is the first time that all these people have sat down in the same room at the same time. I feel like that's success in itself. So, anyway, we've been working on that, we have another meeting coming up. Uh, Greenhorn Park cleanup, so I think all of you have seen the newspapers or maybe on television. I don't, we still don't know who it was, Craig was out there that day, um, in fact, you even, I think, reported it. There was some horrific, horrible, nasty things that were written in our park. Horrible, I mean, in our small little town. And there's a group of people and, and Catherine Gilbert, I'm sorry that she's not here tonight, but she headed up getting a group of people off of Facebook, she just said, hey, anybody out there wanna come clean up? So we met out there, uh, at eight o'clock on, I think, the day after that these, this horrible graffiti thing was discovered. And, um, also our public works department was there. We got on our hands and knees, we scrubbed until our fingers bled. We, and, and the, uh, public works department, there was some red, there was some red spray paint that was particularly hard. We had to put solvent on and really, really scrub it with the big machine and then, you know, and then we scrubbed it with brushes and stuff too, but we worked on it. Uh, we worked on it, you know, pretty much all day. And, and the public works department probably worked on it longer than that. The good news is that we were able to get it up or cover it up, some of the benches we had to paint. We, we did just paint over it because we couldn't get rid of it. But the good news is we have got some amazing people in this town. They all came together for a common goal to make sure that we protect the place that we live and we brought it back to its former beauty as best we could. And, uh, I think the Franklins were there too. Oh, it was on Facebook. Anyway, it was, it was a wonderful experience. I was, I was honored to be there. And afterwards, I got, I got a, I got a text from somebody because, you know, we were introducing ourselves and it said, hi, I'm Carol, and I said, hi, I'm Joan. Anyway, she sent me a text afterwards, she goes, oh my gosh, I didn't know you were a mayor. But that wasn't the point, this was about people caring and getting down on our hands and knees and scrubbing. You know, not just walking our dogs and looking around and, and complaining. We were working to fix it. I mean, I walk my dogs out there, don't get me wrong, but I want it to look nice for myself and tourists and other people while we're walking our dogs out there. And I appreciate all the hard work that people put into it. Um, so that was, that's the thing I'm most proud of. I also worked at the Jefferson State Stampede and Steve, I was proud, Steve also worked out there. Um, we volunteered with our, with our sister city, Montague, and they brought a lot of people out there, it was a wonderful event. And, uh, and I, well, I'm not going to be able to attend something that's coming up, but I, I am so appreciative to our, um, Mayor Pro Tem because we have a proclamation here that's going to be going to the Mount Shasta Title and Escrow Company. I don't know how many of you know this, uh, but they are celebrating their fiftieth anniversary. They've been here since nineteen sixty-seven, uh, to twenty seventeen. And so, uh, if they're having a reception next Thursday, right? And, and I'm going to be at the League of California Cities representing, um, the city of Waireca there, so I'm not gonna be able to go. So I really appreciate.
You're welcome.
Presenting that from all of us here. That's good, and that's the end of my report. Anybody else? Okay, Lady Hagerd, thank you all.
So I'd love to, if we could just, and I apologize, I probably should have asked my chief this first. Chief, if you're out there looking at this on TV, I'm so sorry. I got a little carried away.
I, I will be happy to discuss that with the, the fire chief.
With Chief Lemos, thank you.
And other relevant people.
Thank you very much.
Other relevant people.
I'm sorry.
Uh, so those are our goals. Some things on Prop sixty-four, um, and I sort of guessed ahead, I guess you would say on one of the things, but we did some dispensary tours with elected officials, that was quite, uh, eye-opening for me. Uh, we did pass a zero dispensary cultivation testing manufacturing for Waireca tonight. And we have a contract with SCI for education, implementation and development, um, in stages if the council so desires and that will be on September twenty-seventh. That will start a public, um, a public education, city council of education. So, um, for the, for us at the police department, uh, we're using a lot of overtime to keep the streets safe out there. We've continuously been for the last three to four years, one to three officers down at all times. And a lot of the reasons why we're using overtime is due to the required training, uh, routine vacations and, and the two officers that have been injured, I should hopefully get one back. But just being down one guy is a big deal for us, um, to meet our obligations. So our twelve hour shifts are more routine, officers getting a little tired, they're not signing up for overtime, I have overtime, they've spent on the board for two, three weeks. So if people don't sign up for overtime, they don't get their vacations. So we cancel their vacations. Uh, we do have one that's gonna be, uh, possibly activated this weekend. He's in the National Guard to go help Oregon with their fires. So that will cause an additional issue. And that's our quarterly report, any other questions?
Great report.
Great report.
Very, very thorough, thank you. I mean, we know that you guys are busy, but this really gives us an idea of exactly what you're doing. And, uh, I really also appreciate the, the report on the homelessness. Because there's some things that, that Dwayne and I are working on that this fits in with very nicely. So, thank you, question?
Well, this just points out the need that we have that Measure C meeting to talk about funding for public safety and for the roads because I feel the police department needs another officer.
You can do that during your report.
Yeah.
Okay, so any questions on your report? Okay, then we will start over here with Dwayne. And give council reports. Is it working? Cause I couldn't get my.
Yeah, I got one.
Mine did.
Oh, you downloaded it.
He's got his things written in red.
In red?
I'm sorry, but.
I apologize for giving that out.
That's the only color it comes in, it's great.
Oh, my.
Debbie's like, whoa. Okay.
Where is Debbie? There she is.
I just wanted to, uh, point out it's nice that we got a little rain today, it was very refreshing. And it makes it nice to clear the air a little bit at least. It'll hopefully help out on my buck hunting tomorrow too when I'm gone, so. Um, anyways, also Saturday, I want to remind people too, we have the, there's a Little League fundraiser going on, it's a comedy night at the community center there.
Oh, no.
It was my stomach.
We have, this Tuesday with Siski, we have our Siski homeless correlation meeting coming this Tuesday, so we're attacking this, um, to our best that we can. It's been, like Chief was saying, it's been a, quite a challenge to, uh, to address this issue and we're coming at it from all different angles to make sure that it's handled properly and efficiently and just to make people feel safe again in this town. I've been on a couple of meetings, we've been on a couple of meetings, we've, I have a couple more to attend here in the next week or so also on this whole thing. Um, I want to also bring up the, the subject, I'm sure a lot of people knew about this, the vandalism that went, that took place at the Greenhorn Park and how fast the city.
This is my report.
Oh, whoops, sorry.
I didn't see you there.
Yes, but you can, you can get into more of it. Uh, but anyways, I just was really proud that our city jumped on that and really got on it, cleaned it all up and made it look, and all the volunteers that jumped on that and I'll let Joan get into more of that. Due to, you know, due to that, I think it's something we ought to bring up, the subject again about the park host and I would really like to have this at our next meeting, um, some discussion on the park host again because I think this is a, because of situations like this, this is a valuable asset for us to have a park host there and hopefully prevent some of this stuff going down. And it'll just make the, you know, public feel more safe too. Cause I'll tell you what, I've had a lot and I know other people, council members have had a lot of comments from the public about how they don't want to be in the parks anymore and take their kids to the park. So I think this would help on that situation, bringing, bringing some sense of security to our, our park system, our valuable park system that we have put a lot of time and a lot of energy. And I know a lot of people that are very proud of our park, Greenhorn Park, and we'd like it to be shared by all, so. I'm doing that, that's, we're gonna leave it at that.
Okay.
Debbie? Do you want to do yours now?
No, they, have a good weekend.
Rob, I know you have a report.
Um, okay, so.
You had an exciting afternoon.
Yeah, the reason why I'm dressed like this is because, uh, we did have a wildland fire this, it's showing us a wildland lightning fire, so perhaps that's what was caused. That was the cause. Um, it was around, um, West Greenhorn Road, almost at the end of Marlowe Lane, if anyone's familiar with that.
Is that all the way up Greenhorn?
Almost. Seems like it. So, um, although I was in, I was getting out of my, my suit and my tie and trying to put on this stuff at the time, so wasn't paying a whole lot of attention where we were going. So that was, um, that was interesting. It's, uh, uh, I'll make a pitch for the fire department, we, uh, we would like volunteers. Um, if you would like to dress like this in wildland here or dress in something, um, more appropriate with a tank on your back and go into something that's hot, uh, you should get in touch with, uh, Chief Jerry Lemos or call the city directly, we'd love to have your application. It's something that's, uh, that's needed and, uh, it's rewarding and, um, you will be appreciated a lot by not only us, but also by the citizens, so that's a good thing. Um, I also attended a meeting with the KRC, uh, and, uh, met with the executive director and, um, that was, uh, that's interesting, it's, uh, as everyone knows, I mean, the, there's this group that's formed that, that is responsible for if the dams are coming out, they're the ones that, that are the overseers. So all we're doing as a city is simply making sure that we're on their radar screen if that happens to be the case so that any, uh, ramifications to the city are addressed. And that's about where I can leave that. And Madam Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you. Specifically water and nothing else. I'm not gonna get into a lawsuit. Okay, Norm?
Just dams.
No dams.
I mentioned that we do need to hold a hearing on the Measure C proceeds, hopefully within the next month or two cause it's passed last November or something.
Well, actually, we're, we're still finding out how much we're getting in, but we can, we can talk about that.
Okay, well, I went to a meeting of the Waireca Area Fire Safety Council at the Clamath Forest Headquarters and several things are coming along, this, uh, um, project that's along Ca- Craggy Creek or something that's gonna, uh, treat two hundred and sixty acres, some are in the city limits, some are outside the city limits. There's supposed to be a public, uh, environmental report and they're supposed to hold like a public hearing on this sometime coming up, so keep on the lookout for that. And then they're talking about the Waireca Fire Resiliency Hazard Mitigation Plan that, uh, the city needs to coordinate with, uh, county cause that plan has expired for the county and so it's urgent that the city and the county get together and work on this. And, uh, Chief Lemos was not at the meeting, so hopefully he'll be at the next meeting on September twenty-eighth so he can work with this on setting up some goals of, uh, on both the hazard mitigation plan and also this public project of where they're gonna treat certain lands that fall within the city limits. So those are important things.
If I can comment, we're aware of the need to upgrade the, update the hazard mitigation plan and, uh, the other stuff, and I have an intern working right now on putting together maps for a meeting that may not occur until after fire season's over.
Well, I know they're very busy with the fire season.
Oh, we did, we, we didn't think we could get everyone to the meeting, but we'll try to set it up.
Okay, that's my report.
Okay, thank you. Um, so it has been a, a really busy, well, it was three weeks. Usually it's two weeks in between each one, but this particular, uh, month, it was three weeks. And as Dwayne said, we did attend, um, Team Shasta is an organization of, kind of a, not exactly an organization, is it? It's more of an informal group of citizens in the Mount Shasta area that have gotten together to address many issues, one of them being homelessness. And they've done a lot of really good work on that. And as the chief said, we, uh, the chiefs, uh, our chief included, kicked in many, grant many that came down from the state to hire, um, Dr. Marbit. So that's an ongoing, um, uh, the report came to us and now we're in the implementation stage. So we're in the process of getting all the right people, uh, at the table, which includes the county. And I invited our supervisor, so she was there, Dwayne and I were there, Steve was there, as well as, thank you Chief for sending Lieutenant Gamash. So we have, uh, he is our homelessness liaison from our police department, as well as we had people there i- in the behavioral health building, that's where the meeting was, but from the behavioral health staff, including their director. Uh, and she has pledged some funding toward this. Um, also Ed Petches from Mount Shasta, Weede, Mount Shasta area, is working on getting us some grant funding to help with the implementation. Um, each city is working on their own and the mayor of Mount Shasta, Kathy Morder and myself have invited all of the Lola cities, uh, to also become involved in this because it's not, granted, the cities along the I-five corridor are probably the hardest hit by homelessness, but, uh, all, every single city in our county is being impacted by homelessness, as well as the forest service because as we push them out of our cities, they're going into the forests and fires happen. So this is a really, really. So this is a really, really big complicated issue and I applaud Dwayne for taking the bull by the horns and, and really delving into this. And, uh, it's very time consuming, but it's worthwhile because, um, we've, we, we set a priority with families with children and, uh, either a mother, a single mother with children or a single father with children, to help these people first, you know, to get them out of harm's way. And so we're looking for funding to do that. And we've, we've been able to uncover some ways and some funding and some things that we didn't know about before, so. Um, it's incremental, it's going to take time, but I feel like we're making positive steps, don't you?
Most definitely.
Yeah, and as Dwayne said, the next meeting is on the 12th.
Well, just, just of, you know, getting the county together at this point, which has never been done before, you know, bringing the county together, all the cities together and just getting on the same sheet of music has made it a huge difference right there itself. We can, we can compare ideas, we can look at what works in some places and doesn't work there, you know? So just working together has just made a huge difference and it's gonna make a huge difference for the future, bringing this together and doing the right thing. It's just, there's no solution to the problem, but we can make it better for everybody around here and it's by working with the county and everybody, it's making a difference.
And this meeting that we had, this is the first time that all these people have sat down in the same room at the same time. I feel like that's success in itself. So, anyway, we've been working on that, we have another meeting coming up. Uh, Greenhorn Park cleanup, so I think all of you have seen the newspapers or maybe on television. I don't, we still don't know who it was. Craig was out there that day, um, in fact, you even, I think, reported it. There was some horrific, horrible, nasty things that were written in our park. Horrible, I mean, in our small little town. And there's a group of people and, and Catherine Gilbert, I'm sorry that she's not here tonight, but she headed up getting a group of people off of Facebook. She just said, "Hey, anybody out there wanna come clean up?" So we met out there, uh, at eight o'clock on, I think, the day after that these, this horrible graffiti thing was discovered. And, um, also our public works department was there. We got on our hands and knees, we scrubbed until our fingers bled. We, and, and the, uh, public works department, there was some red, there was some red spray paint that was particularly hard. We had to put solvent on and really, really scrub it with the big machine and then, you know, and then we scrubbed it with brushes and stuff too, but we worked on it. Uh, we worked on it, you know, pretty much all day. And, and the public works department probably worked on it longer than that. The good news is that we were able to get it up or cover it up. Some of the benches we had to paint. We, we did just paint over it because we couldn't get rid of it. But the good news is we have got some amazing people in this town. They all came together for a common goal to make sure that we protect the place that we live and we brought it back to its former beauty as best we could. And, uh, I think the Franklins were there too. Oh, it was on Facebook. Anyway, it was, it was a wonderful experience. I was, I was honored to be there. And afterwards, I got, I got a, I got a text from somebody because, you know, we were introducing ourselves and it said, "Hi, I'm Carol," and I said, "Hi, I'm John." Anyway, she sent me a text afterwards, she goes, "Oh, my gosh, I didn't know you were a mayor." But that wasn't the point. This was about people caring and getting down on our hands and knees and scrubbing, you know, not just walking our dogs and looking around and, and complaining. We were working to fix it. I mean, I walk my dogs out there, don't get me wrong, but I want it to look nice for myself and tourists and other people while we're walking our dogs out there. And I appreciate all the hard work that people put into it. So that was, that's the thing I'm most proud of. I also worked at the Jefferson State Stampede and Steve, I was proud, Steve also worked out there. Um, we volunteered with our, with, uh, our sister city, Montague, and they brought a lot of people out there. It was a wonderful event. And, uh, and, uh, well, I'm not going to be able to attend something that's coming up, but I, I am so appreciative to our, um, Mayor Pro Tem because we have a proclamation here that's going to be going to the Mount Shasta Title and Escrow Company. I don't know how many of you know this, uh, but they are celebrating their 50th anniversary. They've been here since 1967, uh, to 2017. And so, uh, if they're having a reception next Thursday, right? And, and I'm going to be at the League of California Cities representing, um, the city of Waireca there, so I'm not gonna be able to go, so I really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Presenting that from all of us here. That's good, and that's the end of my report. Anybody else? Okay, Lady adjourned, thank you all.